Would be a duo.
Gene Carter.
Gene Carter.
Madam Mayor, at six o'clock.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Thursday, August 8th, Special City Commission meeting to order, and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Pam Triola.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andy Amorosa.
Here.
Commissioner Scott Maxwell. Commissioner Omari Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Herman Robinson.
Here.
Thank you.
If everyone would please rise for the pledge, led by the Vice Mayor, Pro Tem, Max.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't think we have any additions, please.
No.
For presentation. Okay, I do want to remind my fellow commissioners that this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Therefore, there is someone who is going to be taking the exact.
There's a court reporter here.
There's a court reporter here.
Yes.
One and a half.
And also that people will have to be sworn in before they can make their statements. And we're going to be looking to the city attorney several times throughout to explain things, and we need to follow somewhat of a script in reference to how we handle this today so that we can stay adherent to the rules. So with that said, an appeal usually is read into the record at this point. Should I read it, or do you?
Go ahead, you can go ahead now.
An appeal by Hamlex Development LLC, Planning and Zoning Board, case number 18-014-00009, denial by the Planning and Zoning Board of a major site plan application at 1615 10th Avenue North. Again, this is a quasi-judicial hearing to hear an appeal pursuant to Section 2.217 of the City's Code of Ordinances. Hearing is a little different than our regular quasi-judicial process, so city attorney, you might want to explain how this hearing will proceed.
Sure. Okay, as the mayor stated, this is an appeal. This is not just a regular quasi-judicial process, so there will be no new evidence presented at this hearing. Everything that the commission will consider is basically in this bound document. It's the evidence that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board on two different occasions, two different meetings. However, the commission will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant and the city. The city will be given 10 minutes to make a presentation, and then the applicant will be given 10 minutes to make a presentation. We will give the public an opportunity to speak, however, I'm cautioning the commission that, to the extent that the public is trying to offer testimony or give you new information, you can hear it, but you can't really consider it in this appeal. This is an appeal. So you need to limit your thought process. It's not an easy issue, but the things that are in your head, they need to be limited to the documents that you have in front of you, or to any of the issues that you've asked to be clarified of either the applicant or of the city. So you can't ask questions. We're not going to have a back and forth at the end. Once the public, once the applicant makes his presentation, the city makes its presentation, the public gives its comments, you all need to deliberate before you make a motion. I would ask that you think about how you want your motion to be formed, because you need to give reasons for whatever decision you make, which will be either to uphold the decision of the Planning and Zoning Board, or to reverse it. And if you reverse it and you decide that the site plan application should be granted, you may want to add some conditions. Staff will go over some of those conditions with you tonight, and we'll go from there. But again, this is an appeal, and I want to make that clear to everyone, that we're not really going to allow a lot of new information to be brought into this hearing.
Do we have to disclose ex parte?
I'm just going to ask.
She's going to get to that, absolutely.
Hey, I have to ask each and every one of you if you've had any ex parte communications or personal investigations or relationships with any of the parties involved.
I'll start with you.
I did, with their attorney.
I also met with their attorney.
Don't believe I met with their attorney, but I want to ask the lawyer or something.
I met with their attorney twice.
I've had no communication with anybody.
I've had no communication with anybody, but I wanted to ask, I didn't find in the backup documents, one of the pieces of landing question used to be owned by a former.
Landlord.
Landlord of my office building. And I don't know, well, his name wasn't mentioned, so I don't know if he's even.
He doesn't.
Part of this or not.
He doesn't.
But I just wanted to make sure that I said that, because I know he used it.
Okay. I know that Hamlex is the developer of the property. Who is the, do we know who the owner of the property is?
It wasn't in the backup documents, so I just want to make sure.
Okay. The owner of the property is in the application? Okay.
Yeah, I didn't.
This needs to be on the record, they can't just.
Pardon me?
They're looking it up.
Okay. I just want to be very cautious.
Absolutely.
While she's doing that, being married to a court reporter, I always like to say, when you're in one of these hearings, you're talking, she has to capture everything that's said correctly and identify the speaker. And talking over each other, or people talking off the mic, is not going to be acceptable in this kind of hearing, so.
So that, to the extent that we can, let's allow the mayor to recognize, she does a great job with that anyway, but.
Oh, thank you.
You do.
You have a great name.
I know my wife's listening, so I just got running points.
I can't find it.
I couldn't find it, so that's why, I just want to make sure. And just for the record, this was the person who owned it, several owners back, or the present owners, but I just want to make sure.
Yeah, if I may. Kevin Fisher, for the record, Planning and Preservation Manager. The current owner of that property is 10th Avenue Development LLC.
So there's no name person there, I don't know.
Yeah, and the mailing address is based out of New York City.
That's him, probably. What do I need to do?
Nothing. You said he was your past landlord?
Like, five years ago, he owned the building that I rented, and then it was sold to somebody else, and I paid rent to them. But I just, I know them, I haven't spoken to them in five or six years, but.
Well, thank you for bringing it up, but it's not a conflict.
Okay.
Just want to make sure. All right, so. Or, do you have comment cards, or you have question cards already?
Yes, ma'am.
If anybody did not fill out a public comment card, they need to do so now. Unlike a regular meeting, we'll have to have you all stand up, because you have to swear to tell the truth, and the city clerk will actually handle that. So whoever has a card in right now, please stand.
Along with the applicant and the.
Yes.
Staff.
City staff, please.
Anyone that's going to.
Anyone that's going to speak needs to stand up.
And raise their right hand.
Raise your right hand.
Do you swear and affirm that in this proceeding, you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, staff, Director for Community Sustainability, hello there.
Hello.
Will you be giving the presentation, which can be no longer than 10 minutes? Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, for the record, Kevin Fisher, Planning and Preservation Manager. So again, a brief summary, and the mayor already covered this, but what is before you tonight is an appeal by Hamlex Development of the final order, which was rendered by the Planning and Development Board, which denied a site plan application at 1615 10th Avenue North for a single destination retail use. And in this case, that use was a Dollar General store. Just to give you all a little history of how we got here tonight, the application was originally submitted to the department on August 2nd of last year. We had our first site plan review team meeting, which was an internal meeting between the different departments within the city. That was held on August 27th, 2018. Subsequent month, in September, we held the site plan review team meeting with the applicant, and that's the process where each of the departments develop their comments. We go through those with the applicant, and they start to discuss how they'll, how they're addressed the comments. Based on those comments, there was then a resubmital of the application, which was received on November 5th. Then moving into 2019, the original hearing at the Planning and Zoning Board was held on January 16th, and at that meeting, the board voted 5 to 2 to deny the site plan. And that was after the board found that the site plan was not in compliance with Section 23.2-31 of the city's land development regulations. Then on February 6th, staff included an item on the agenda at that month's Planning and Zoning Board meeting to request that they reconsider and rehear the meeting, or rehear the case at the March Planning and Zoning Board meeting. The reason for this was, in the January backup material, we included a traffic analysis that was prepared by WGI for 10th Avenue North and A Street, but did not include the applicant's traffic analysis. And because traffic was such a significant discussion item in January, we felt it was important to provide this information to the board. The board agreed and voted 6 to 0 at the February board meeting to rehear. That came back before the Planning and Zoning Board on March 6th, and then at that meeting, the board voted 3 to 2 to deny the request for construction of the 7,441 square foot single destination retail use. I'm sure you all are familiar where this is, but just to put it on the screen, it is located on the south side of 10th Avenue North, between A and B Streets. The zoning for this property and the properties to the south is the mixed-use east zoning district. Just a few photos showing the existing conditions. The one at the top is looking south from 10th Avenue North. The photo on the bottom left is from, that is from A Street, looking towards the northeast across the site. And the photo at the bottom right is from B Street, also looking across the property towards 10th Avenue North. This is showing the proposed site plan. When we were reviewing the site plan through the SPRT process, and in particular, planning and zoning, in addition to looking at the requirements per the zoning code for mixed-use east in terms of setback and block coverage and all those standards that we look at, the major thoroughfare design guidelines were also applicable at this location. So for instance, you'll see the building is located towards the north end of the site, abutting 10th Avenue North, with no parking located between the front building line and 10th Avenue North. And then you can see on the lower left.
Do you have a pointer? I'm sorry. Thank you.
So if you can see the mouse on the screen, where I'm circling here. So this is the ingress and egress to the site proposed from A Street, and you'll notice it was redesigned after the SPRT review process to be a right-in, right-out only on A Street. And then you'll see over here at the lower right, this is the ingress and egress to B Street. And the next few slides I'm going to go through, so this is the internal to the property. The next few slides will show some of the off-site related improvements. The first being, so here we're looking at 10th Avenue North, and. So where I'm kind of going up and down, here would be B Street. So this is a proposed addition of a left turn lane. Right now, there's a solid median at this location. This would be built at the expense of the applicant, providing this left turn lane to provide access to B Street. Here now, we are looking at, we're along A Street, and what this is showing is the applicant would be donating 10 feet of additional right-of-way along North A Street, and for the length of the property, and this would be to support future road improvements along A Street at this location. Then lastly, going back to B Street, this is. This is where there would be full milling and overlay of North B Street. Per the conditions of Public Services, they would be required to do 15 feet, basically the half of the roadway adjacent to their property, but they would be, at their cost, doing the full width of B Street. So here I wanted to go through the renderings. So here we're looking at the, all four facades of the building. This was what was included in the original submittal, and we worked extensively with the applicant, because again, this corridor is under the major thoroughfare design guidelines. So in terms of building massing and architectural features, we worked with them to come up with, this was what was included in the resubmittal that we received. I'll kind of go back and forth. At the top left is the west elevation that was originally proposed, and then you can see there was, the main change on this was a modification of the roof line. The second rendering down on the left is the south, south facade, that was what was originally submitted, and that was part of the resubmittal. The lower left is the north facade, so this is what would be fronting on 10th Avenue North. Again, that's the original submittal, that was the resubmittal. And here, it appears to be almost a two-story structure on the left side there, and that's because of the grade of the property there. And then lastly, on the right, is the east elevation, and that was the original submittal, and then that was part of the resubmittal. Here we. Here, this is the landscape plan. I did work extensively with our corporate culturalist, David McGrew, and it did meet and exceed what the landscape code would require. And then, to close out the presentation, I just wanted to have on the screen, this was the signed final order after the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and I will. Just to read into the record what the findings were of the board in that order, and it was, "The board hereby finds as follows, applicant has failed to meet all the standards set forth in Section 23.2-31 entitled Site Design Qualitative Standards of the City Code of Ordinances, and applicant's, and applicant's site plan does not adequately handle traffic on A Street, northbound specifically, and does not adequately address safety concerns and related issues on 10th Avenue North." One thing to close out, I did want to touch on, there was a lot of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting prior to the denial. There was a motion to approve that wasn't seconded, so that motion died, but there were a few other conditions of approval that had consensus from the board that were included in that motion. One of those were on the south property line, which abuts to single-family structures to use canopy trees. The landscape plan, as submitted, had medium trees. The applicant was willing to do that. And lastly, to not allow outdoor storage or displays, including propane gas. So those were, those were two things that were proper in that motion, but again, it died after a long time. Heard the beeper? With that, I will conclude.
10 minutes. Thank you. The applicant can now make their presentation, which of course can be no longer than 10 minutes.
Good evening, Dwayne Dickerson, on behalf of the applicant. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Denae Miskel-Backman, offices at 14 Southeast 4th Street in Boca Raton, Florida. Staff gave a very thorough presentation, so I am not going to reiterate what they said. Is this working? Guys trying to steal some of my time?
I'll give it back to you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, that's been very informative, thank you.
Just let us know where to pick up our building permits. We'll be. I'm sorry, am I doing something wrong here? Oh, you say next, okay, great, great. This was just a slide reviewing the hearing history, but that's been thoroughly gone over. This is a slide, let's jump into traffic. As we all know, that was one of the main issues that was discussed. I want to first start with your code requirements with respect to traffic and traffic studies. Section 23.5-7(c)(4) entitled special traffic capacity lays out the procedures for when a traffic study is required. You'll see in that paragraph, it says, under subsection B, "If the project will add more than 500 net trips per day to the county or state system of collector and ulterior streets, conformance to the Palm Beach County traffic performance ordinance, ordinances shall be demonstrated." Further, the applicant is required to submit a traffic study by professional traffic engineer. And so how you figure out whether or not you're at the 500 trips or not is by doing a trip generation analysis through the ITE, which stands for Institute for Transportation Engineers. Any transportation engineer will tell you that's the Holy Grail of transportation engineering manual. And so your code, in line with that, requires that you base it upon the rates contained in the Palm Beach County Ordinance 89-19 or the ITE manual. So based upon an analysis of the trips for the proposed site, using the ITE manual, it was determined that this site would generate 312 daily trips for this project. So clearly, that's well below the 500 that your code requires as the minimum number of trips that trigger a traffic study. So clearly, we do not trigger a traffic study, we did not trigger a traffic study, and your code did not require one. However, staff wanted us to do a traffic analysis, and that was a requirement of us, so instead of challenging that, we did move forward and do a traffic analysis. Next slide, please. Kevin went through our site. As you can see there, very quickly, the two stars in blue on the left is A Street, on the right is B Street. Those are our two access points. So no access off of 10th Avenue, only access on A Street and B Street. In addition to that, what you see on the hash on the right side, in the yellow, is our resurfacing plan for B Street. With respect to the turn lane, that's, if you're heading westbound and you're making that new turn lane that we're proposing on 10th Avenue, we will submit to all required agencies having jurisdiction over 10th Avenue, and of course, subject to their approval, we will proceed with construction of that turn lane at our sole cost. Obviously, you know, there are jurisdictional agencies that have to approve it, but as long as they do, we will construct it, and it will be at our sole cost. Next slide, please. So, like I said, even though we were well under the 500 minimum trips that trigger a traffic study, we did one. And on October the 9th, 2018, we prepared our traffic analysis, and it was submitted to the city. And I just want to go through the summary of the findings. Once again, it did state that we would generate 312 net daily trips. It did conclude that the current operation of the adjacent intersection and roadway segments do operate within adequate capacity. It also determined that we satisfied all the Palm Beach County traffic performance standards. They have certain tests, test one and two, for roadway capacity and intersection capacity. We satisfied both tests. That we would be proposing the new directional opening on 10th Avenue to allow for westbound left turns on the B Street, as was shown, that the left turn deceleration lane for the new turn lane would have to be at least 205 feet long, which we do exceed that, that the turn lanes are not required at the access driveways of A Street and B Street, based on the capacity and the proposed trips. And so therefore, the overall summary and conclusion is that the proposed development will have a de minimis impact on the surrounding transportation networks, and that there are sufficient capacity available on the existing networks. And de minimis is a traffic industry term, meaning minimal or insignificant. Next. So this was a slide, check my timer, this was a slide where, after we submitted that traffic analysis, staff asked us to do additional analysis, and they wanted to know, they wanted to look at additional potential access into the site. So if you see in this graphic, there were three access points, or three changes that they looked at. They said, "Please look at a proposed right turn in from 10th Avenue," which would be the eastbound right turn in. They looked at an elimination of the westbound left turn lane onto North B Street, and how that would affect access to the site, and also elimination of access from North A Street. That was done in October of 2018. Next slide, please. This is the summary of that additional analysis, that the suggested access would force all traffic coming from the east on 10th Avenue to make a U-turn movement, and that we would need to expand 10th Avenue to accommodate that U-turn, and we didn't have the ability to do that. Also, eliminating access on North A Street would force all project traffic heading west on 10th Avenue to make a U-turn movement at the next traffic signal, which is Northeast Street. That the suggested right-in only off of 10th Avenue would be located approximately 36 feet from the traffic signal on North A Street, which is very close to a signal, and as you all know, in traffic planning, you try to have spacing to avoid conflicts from major intersections. Also, that it'd require 155-foot right turn deceleration lane, and that there was no room for that deceleration lane, which would make that movement that they were proposing unsafe, and that there were potential safety issues with the proposed access that we were looking at. So the final conclusion with this additional analysis was that the four access driveways on both North A Street and North B Street, in addition to providing the westbound directional left turn movement from 10th onto North B Street, that that would be the access that would be the most efficient and the safest traffic circulation. Now, since, go back for one second, don't mind. All right, well, I'll show you a little bit later in the site plan, but, so, the analysis determined. But so, the analysis determined that full access on A Street and B Street was sufficient. However, in working with staff, we decided to make A Street right in and right out only. Okay? So if you're, just get the frame of reference, if you're heading southbound, coming across 10th Avenue, right, and you're stopped to try to make the left end to our site, you could, while you're stopping to try to make that left turn, traffic could potentially back up heading north into the intersection, and we didn't want that. So we eliminated the left end, if you're heading southbound. We also eliminated the left out, because same, same concept. If people are making that left out, it could hamper traffic that's heading southbound, or even the northbound, and create the stack. So when we get to the site plan in a quick second, I'll show you exactly what I'm talking about. Next slide, please. So we did that October of 2018. Then, now, this is the third rendition of the traffic analysis, where staff said, "Well, we want you to look at," and I believe this was also from the Planning and Zoning Board during one of our first hearings, where they said, "Look at additional projects that are coming online. We want you to look at the cumulative impacts of other projects." So there were three projects that were mentioned. One was Midlake Worth Apartments, two was Golden Road Apartments, and three was Adopt a Family Apartments. So we did, now this is the third analysis of traffic with those cumulative impacts. Now, our traffic engineer's here, and he can answer any questions that you may have. But I will tell you that a traffic analysis already takes into consideration future growth patterns in the area when looking at impacts and levels of service. So that was already taken into consideration. But, you know, being transparent, this is what was asked of us from staff and from the Planning and Zoning Board, and this is what we did. Next slide, please. And so this was dated February 26 of 2019, and the results, the summary of the results from that analysis was as follows. We reanalyzed the cumulative project traffic, and we determined, the study determined that it currently operates at an adequate level of service, and is projected to continue to do so with the cumulative projects that were coming online, and with our project coming online. So the final summary was that the traffic from the proposed Dollar General...
Go ahead and finish that.
Yeah, probably need five more minutes, if you don't, you know, Madam Chair, I think this is important.
Did you give him the extra minutes from the time that he started?
I did not, but it wasn't five minutes.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's...
Give another minute, but I mean, but...
But I'll be, because I believe the time was just what we thought was reasonable, but I think it is important for you to have all this. I don't think there's any law or code that requires the 10 minutes.
Well, the City Commission has rules on their quasi-judicial proceedings, and it said, the rules state 10 minutes for each side. However, I think the information is important to you. You can give him a few more minutes. It's up to you.
Two.
You want a motion?
No, we don't need a motion. Unless you want, unless you want a motion.
Chair makes that.
Yeah, I'm fit with a couple minutes, but not...
Sure, okay. So I'll just skip. So the conclusion of that was that the Dollar General, as proposed, would only add 0.8 seconds of additional delay to the traffic patterns. That's less than one second, okay? And that the impact of the proposed development to the operation of the intersection are minimal. Next slide, please. This is the TPS letter. This is a letter, a traffic performance standards letter. The county did do a full analysis of this proposed use. You see the 7,441 square feet, and they also determined that the new daily trips would be 312. And they, their final determination was that, based on our review, the traffic division has determined the proposed development meets the traffic performance standards of Palm Beach County. So I'll skip forward a few, please. Go to staff recommendation. So staff is recommending, as based on the analysis, staff finds the major site plan for construction of the Dollar General is, generally meets the Palm Beach County Plan and the Land Development Regulation. So during, I want to point your attention to the transcript during our hearing on March 6, and I asked staff, "Did staff find that the application meets all of the city's traffic requirements and standards?" And Mr. Kevin Fisher responded and said, "It was referenced during their presentation, the section of our code regarding the requirements of traffic study. It was stated correctly that the threshold is over 500 trips. And the way our code specifies whether or not that study needs to be submitted to us using the ITE trip generation rates," which I know they touched on. So yes, that was accurate. Also, I listed in the transcript, which I believe you thoroughly reviewed, that I asked Mr. Fisher if we met the requirements of 23.2-31, specifically L, community appearance criteria, and he stated yes. And so, is that my two minutes?
It is.
Okay, so...
We're tough around here.
Yeah, I see. Well, I would like to, I'm sure once there's comments, I would like to...
There'll be questions. I'm sure you'll get to your entire analysis.
First, thank you.
At this point, we'd like to call on the public to make their statements. Unfortunately, you can't add a card at this time, because you had to have been sworn in. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's a quasi-judicial process, we have to obey by the format of it. Okay. Sarah Maliga, followed by Todd Townsend.
And these are two minutes.
These are two minutes?
Name and address.
And you must, you must say your name and address.
Sarah Maliga, 408 Southeast Street, Lake Worth Beach, Florida, 33460. Couple of things I want to bring up. I know you guys have a big stack of stuff there. I'm just wondering if in that stack of documents is a map of all the existing Dollar Generals that are, there are over five within 3.6 miles of the downtown area. I don't think that we need another one. I also wonder, are they going to do the same thing that Starbucks said, "Oh, we're going to keep the downtown," and then Starbucks turned around and closed their downtown once they had the new location open? Being part of the Royal Point Santa Neighborhood Association, we already have an immense amount of problems with delivery trucks coming up and down South A, South B, South C, South D Street, using them as a cut-through to do their deliveries. This picture was taken today, not only is this truck parked facing the wrong way on a one-way, doing deliveries, but in front of a no-truck sign. So these are problems that we already deal with. We are asking you, we are screaming from the top of our lungs in Royal Point Santa Neighborhood Association, we do not want any more traffic. We have Highland Elementary, we have Lake Worth Middle, and we have Lake Worth High School on South A Street. That is a thoroughfare to get students back and forth. You culminate that with trucks that are trying to do a shortcut through the main streets, causing damage to the roads that we're paying for to be redone, because that's where most of the damage is coming from in our neighborhoods. Factor that in, at peak hours of people going to work or dropping their students off in school buses, you are going to have a catastrophe for something bad to happen to our children. These kids walk and bike back and forth to school. It's already dangerous. I'm a business owner, you all know that. I believe in smart business, I believe in good business. I think that we do need to build something there, but not something that's going to bring more traffic in. The gentleman mentioned left in and left out, so now if you're gonna, if you can't turn left in, now you've got to drive around the block to hit the next street, which is just going to bring more traffic to that, to that one sector of Tropical Ridge. That's not fair to the residents who live there. These trucks are going to be coming through, making, and trust me, they're not going to, they're not going to follow the speed signs, because they don't in our neighborhood. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Todd Townsend. Again, everybody remember, please state your address, followed by Carolyn Delly.
Todd Townsend, 502 South J Street. Good to see everybody tonight. Couple of quick points. First of all, I think stores like yours, and your store and other stores like yours, should stop selling these, these plastic guns that look like these real guns that kids are using to go out and kill people. I think, you know, that's crazy that they're still being on the shelves, and that they should be taken off of there. And so I think that that leads itself towards bad business practice, and I resent your coming in here and trying to strong-arm us into putting your store in a place where we've already denied it. And I just want to, last thing is for people to realize, when people are on 95, there's going to be a sign out there that says, "Dollar General .01 Mile." Not cool.
Carolyn Delly, followed by Kathy Turk.
Good evening. Carolyn Delly, 126 North E. I also own a house at 12th Avenue, North and A Street, so I travel that route many, many times, probably a day, and it's always, always crazy traffic. I also want to say, I used to teach at Highland Elementary, and I, my sons went to Lake Worth Middle and Lake Worth High. I know what it's like during rush hour, and we really don't need any more traffic in and out. I actually, I love Dollar General. I come down to this one down that way, that downtown, all the time. It's a great store. I love what they've got, sorry. But that is not the place for it, at all. This is, what you have across the street of 10th Avenue, the little office doctor area, it's well landscaped, it's quiet, it's a nice location for that, it's well-designed. Something like that would be perfect. I'm not trying to say leave it as an empty lot, but Dollar General, I don't think so. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Kathy Turk, followed by James Calamazza. Sorry, I'm...
Hi, Kathy Turk, 901 North B Street. So I live actually five houses down from this vacant lot. A couple of things on the traffic study. First of all, it did not include Banyon Court, which is 85, two and three-bedroom apartments, units just south of this on A Street. It didn't include Lake Cove, which is 56 homes, three and four-bedroom homes. I'm also really disappointed, because I have been here when the school board said that the 85 units was only going to bring in 10 new students. I look at the county saying that we're not, we're only going to have X number, very few additional traffic things in the traffic study should go through. I'm watching FDOT screw up our 95, and I really hope that somebody won't give a damn about Lake Worth. This is ridiculous. We don't have affluence, and we are vulnerable to all of these outside influences. And we all know that Dollar General displaces grocery stores, they have cheap labor and fewer jobs. What you may not know, I don't know if you've driven it, but on B Street is actually on the top of a hill. So now we're going to put a business on the corner. We've got kids coming through on middle school, to middle school. They have no brains. They drive, they ride their bicycles, they run across there. We've got anywhere from two to four crossing guards at that intersection every day before and after school, trying to protect these kids going through. Now, we look at not only the traffic this is going to bring on, but we also have to look at these trucks. Now, if you look at the actual site plan, I don't know how to drive a big rig, but I just buy a big van, but a big rig, I'm not real sure about, but trying to make that left-hand turn and then come in to the back of the building. We've got, they've got the garbage can there, they've got the deliveries there. My understanding is that they start deliveries at 4:00 a.m. on this one at Lake Eluster. We already have one, we don't need another, we can't handle the traffic, we can't endanger our children. Thank you.
Thank you. James, and I do need your address, too, please.
James Calamazza, 909 North A Street, Lake Worth, Florida. I don't need a traffic survey. It's a nightmare on A Street. And the infamous left, right-out-only is absolutely a joke. You come in there, if a big truck comes around that corner, and they can't make that left-hand turn, they're going to go straight down A Street, along with all the other thousands and thousands of cars, trucks. They'll go to 7th, they're going to have to make that left, they're going to have to go up B Street, and somehow tucked behind the actual building. Now, again, I've never driven an 18-wheeler, but that's going to be impossible. It's just a bad location for this sort of a store. People go there, you sell fine products, that's all fine and dandy, but that corner's going to be a nightmare, because when traffic backs up and people start banging into each other, they're going to come after you guys. Because we've told these people, everybody, that this is dangerous, and when people start banging into each other, they're coming after you.
Okay, I'm sure. That's it, that's the last card.
I have the cards.
I have the cards, too. Thank you. All right, at this time, commissioners, you can ask any questions for staff or the applicant. Commissioner Hardy's light is on. Vice Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I have a number of questions. I'll start with city staff. In your presentation, you said that initially, this site plan did not meet a certain code, 23s to point whatever.
2-21.
Just to clear...
You're on.
Just to clarify, that was when I was reading from the order of the Planning and Zoning Board. So that was never included in staff's, staff report to the Planning and Zoning Board. That was when they made their motion to deny the planning board stated.
So are you saying it was the opinion of the Planning and Zoning Board that they didn't meet the ordinance?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? It's not staff's opinion?
Correct.
Did, was the Planning and Zoning Board correct? Did it not meet that code?
Hold on, Pam. I want to make sure that we're phrasing it properly.
Well, I...
I forgot, I need to really look at you first before I say anything.
No, no. Well, I think staff's analysis supported the application.
Okay, we'll move on to the next set of questions. Let's see here. I'm not really sure where to start, but I'm going to have a methodology to these questions of the applicant. Am I allowed to ask what their hours of operation are?
Was, I think that was discussed below. I've read these transcripts, but I don't remember that specifically. Discussing the hours, you can ask anything that's in this packet, basically, or anything that they brought up today. So I think you can ask what the hours of operation are.
You might want to...
I don't want to, you know, I really don't want to kill the free flow of...
Right, well, if I, if I ask something that just say, and I won't push it.
Dwayne Dickerson, again, for the record, typically their hours are approximately from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 or 10:00 p.m. It does depend on the demand and so forth, so it can vary from store to store, but that's the traditional hours.
Okay, then my next question would be, assuming that it's 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 or 10:00 p.m., what peak hours, what hours of the day would you consider peak hours?
Traffic engineer may come up to be able to speak.
Why would the, all due respect, why would the traffic engineer have to tell me when the business's peak hours are for customers coming and going?
Oh, would usually, usually, peak hours tied to the trips.
No, I want to know what the peak hours of operation are. When are you busiest at the Dollar General? What, in the morning, in the afternoon, lunch?
Good evening. Jeremy Anderson with Common Oak Engineering, 1201 Louisiana Avenue, Orlando, Florida. The peak hours of the Dollar General is typically between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., so it's in the afternoon.
Are there any other peak hours during the day?
Yeah, those are the peak hours.
So you don't have a breakfast, or a morning rush, or a midday rush? Nothing like that? So you're telling me that your business is pretty steady throughout the day, and then you get whacked between the drive time on the way home?
Certainly, there might be some busier hours in the morning, but again, the peak hour is between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m.
Okay. So my next question's going to be, and this would be maybe the attorney, how many different configurations are there of Dollar General store, in terms of size? I mean, there's probably a set, you know, generally speaking, you know, square footage-wise?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that. This is actually a smaller prototype. It's their smallest store, and it's actually was selected in consideration of the infill nature of the development, the location of the store. So Dollar General selected a smaller store that fits with the, with the property and with this particular community. So to answer your question, there are generally three prototypes. There's the small one, which is roughly 7,500. In this case, we restricted, it's a little bit smaller than 7,500. The store size that they generally go with is a 9,100-square-foot store. And I believe the third proto is 10,600 or something along those lines, but that one is, it's done less as of late.
Okay, can you tell me what, Dollar General, what's their average annual sales in overall?
That's all confidential information, that we have no idea of what they are, what their sales are.
Well, let me ask you another question. If it's confidential, how are you able to determine how many trips you're going to have, based on your sales?
The trip generation analysis, as I discussed earlier, is based on the Institute for Transportation Engineers manual. It looks at the use, and it looks at the size of the use, and then there's a calculation and a formula that determines anticipated trips based on the use type and the size of the location.
So you're telling me that dollar volume sales has no impact on the traffic study?
No, that the ITE, unless I, Mohammed, unless let our traffic engineer speak to that.
Good evening, commissioners. Mohammed Abdallah, I'm a professional engineer, specialized in traffic engineering. The, the standard methodology that, basically, to generate traffic is based on the ITE, as Mr. Dickerson said. Mr. Dickerson said, and that is based on surveys of numerous stores throughout the country that are of a similar use, not all Dollar Generals. There could be other similar type stores that are like this, and that is the accepted methodology. We're not allowed to basically generate by a specific use, but by a type of land use.
All right, well, I'm going to get a little bit deeper into this. How many Dollar General stores are there in the United States?
There are, yeah, roughly 15,000.
Here's where I'm going with this. I'm concerned about the methodology in which the traffic study was conducted, and it seems like the questions either I'm not asking them correctly, or maybe my perception, I apologize, is that maybe you're dancing around the answer. There's certainly, I'm sure the company knows, has an idea of what type of sales they intend to generate on this site, or they wouldn't just put it a store. And if you can't answer that question, that means the traffic study, in my mind, is, means nothing.
Well, if I make, Commissioner, if you look at your code, which is Section 23.5-7C3B, it states that the ITE manual is the correct methodology for determining trip and traffic generation. And so, and I also wanted to state, in addition to that, if you look at the TPS letter, which is the Traffic Performance Letter from Palm Beach County, which is also a benchmark in your code, it does also require ITE manual as, and states that's the basis for trip generation analysis.
So you're telling me, I want to make sure I'm clear on this, because I'm going to chew this bone until I'm satisfied. Okay. You're telling me that this traffic study, or all traffic studies, are done irrespective of the dollar's sales test for whatever site use is going to, whether it's McDonald's, a Dollar General, a mall, anything like that? You're telling me that's all irrelevant, dollar sales?
They're indirectly related, Commissioner. Every, the ITE has surveyed various land uses throughout the country, and the, basically the trips generated are based on the activity at those land uses, which naturally would lead to some kind of sales associated with that activity. However, from a scientific perspective, our analysis is not based on dollars generated, it's based on trips generated, because that's what generates the impact. And ITE looks at the trips generated, not the, not the financial.
You must have some sort of a dollar test to base your trips on. You cannot pluck a number out because it's a Dollar General in Palm Beach County, or a Dollar General in Sumter County, South Carolina. They're two different, you're going to get two different...
To your point, Commissioner, and not to interrupt, but to your point, the FDOT had done a test of the ITE numbers here in Florida. So they studied a number of Dollar General type stores, not Dollar Generals only, and found that the ITE numbers are accurate.
So you're telling me they're never wrong?
Their estimates are...
So they could be wrong?
Anytime you're estimating, it's an estimate.
Okay. Couple more questions. I'm not, I'm not really satisfied. I can't believe that any corporation would develop a site and not have some sort of an idea of how much sales they intend to generate, what their average ticket sale is, and how many customers are going to walk through the door based on those numbers, whether it's foot traffic or cars. And you're telling me that FDOT, who builds roads and runs roads, they're going to tell us what Dollar General's going to generate in trips? That doesn't make any sense to me. It may be the way it's done, but frankly, if I had, you know, maybe it needs to be done some other way.
Yeah, it, yeah, it is the way it's done. And like I say, I think there's three sources that we've used for the competent and substantial evidence. One is our expert traffic engineer, two is the city's code of ordinances, and three is the county's trip generation analysis, which all three require ITE as the manual and the basis for the analysis. And all three came up with the same trip generation of approximately 312.
All right. Move on to a different line of questioning, if I could. Could you put the site plan up on the screen for me? All right. I want to, I want to be clear on this. I think what I see at the bottom of the site plan in the gray area, I guess that's driveway, is that correct?
Correct. That's the drive out.
Okay. So I see driveway on the left side, which would be on the A Street side, and I see driveway on the B side, B Street side. There's no cut through there, is that correct? In other words, I couldn't turn into, off of A Street into Dollar General and cut through and get to B Street?
Yes, you can.
You can?
Yes, that's one continuous driveway.
Show me where, where they would go, is it all the bottom there, behind the building? Is that how they would cut through to B Street?
To the south of the building.
Okay, so what's that white area, speckled area right there between the two areas of pavement?
That's concrete, and working with staff, there's a couple of features there, and that was actually thoroughly discussed, and a part of the comments, the review period that we went through with staff before we came before the commission. And we have a raised hump there as well as a, as a concrete area to, to just kind of slow things down.
Okay, well, I can tell you one thing, the way traffic exists currently on A Street, people are going to cut through to get to B Street, and they're not going to stop at Dollar General. Next question. Can you show me where the trash area is?
I don't have a pointer.
That's your, that little teeny weeny itsy bitsy, how many square feet is that?
Oh, it's a, it's about over 100 square feet. It meets requirements of solid waste that the city has.
So you have a 10 by 10 dumpster corral? Is that what I'm kind of hearing?
Yes, it's roughly that size. It's a, it's a screen dumpster, it's architecturally compatible with the building.
What are you doing with the cardboard?
The Dollar, that's, I'm glad you answered that. Dollar General is actually, they do fantastic with their recycle program. They actually take all their boxes and keep it inside of their store, and they, they have folks come and pick it up, so they, they do really well with that.
So they bale it inside the store?
The boxes, yeah, are inside.
So you have a compactor inside the store?
I don't, not sure exactly how they do it, but they certainly compacted enough to get it out of the way, for sure, yeah.
That's a lot, that's a lot of space taken up for cardboard to be laying around inside. The question is, is there any way possible to be put outside?
You're saying the compactor outside?
Well, either way, whether they compact it, what I'm saying to you is, you know, if they bail, if you're telling me they bail and recycle their cardboard, they probably have a compactor to do that. And the question is, do you have a compactor in that building that's going to bail the cardboard?
There's not a compactor inside the store, Commissioner, but they have, we're speaking about, our, 10,000, 15,000 stores. Operation is critical to this company, so they operate their store by compacting the boxes in whatever manner they do for 15,000 stores.
I'm just concerned that above, that cardboard, those bales perhaps are going to end up outside.
Okay.
Along with pop crates, you know, the plastic crates for the, for the soft drinks and all that?
I'll tell you, your comments, well received, and we can make sure that the operations of the store understands that that's not acceptable.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask you a hypothetical question, and I appreciate that concession.
Sure.
So you build this, this Dollar General, and it doesn't happen, what recourse do we have?
I think it's a code enforcement matter, of course.
And of course, I'm sure, as an attorney, you know how code enforcement works.
Yeah.
It's a process, it's not an event.
It's, it's a process, but if you discuss with staff, I think this developer and this operator of this location has shown that they're not just going to do the bare minimum. And in your staff report, there are comments throughout that say, it's noted that the applicant made significant architectural improvements, as you see that. So we have, I believe, shown to staff that we're not just going to do the bare minimum. We hear you loud and clear with the traffic analysis. Like I said, it clearly was not required by your code, but that was something in transparency working with your staff we did. So that's a comment you have. We'll absolutely make sure that's taken back to me.
Two more little things related to traffic. As you know, if you were westbound on 10th Avenue North, coming up over the interstate, this horizon, what would you say if somebody were to suggest that, you know, having your cut through, like you're proposing on 10th, so folks can get on into B, B Street? What would you say if I told you there's a, probably a realistic chance that somebody's going to get T-boned because you can't see as you're coming up on that horizon through that light? You cannot see it. Now, I'd like to believe that we're all really good drivers, and we adhere to the speed limit, and we're very cautious, but that's very unsettling for me.
I completely understand what you're saying. I don't know if I introduced myself correctly at the initial point. I'm a professional engineer on this project. It's my license. It's on the line for things like that. That's why Mr. Dickerson explained that we were still going through that approval process. We have presented it, and we're going through that design, and, and either way, the store has been shown to work with or without the turn lane. Working with staff through the, the reason why it's been presented is because working through staff, trying, we, it was added through that process. Again, nobody wants a T-bone. It doesn't matter if it's my license or just the person standing here next to me. Nobody wants that, and we'll make sure that it's properly designed.
It's just, you know, this is, I think, I'll wrap it up, Madam Mayor. This, my concern here is that, yes, you've based concessions with respect to considering this horizon. You didn't have to go out and do traffic studies, as I understand it, but you did them anyway. I'm not convinced that the methodology is, you know, under the circumstances, under this particular site. I mean, it's amazing how government works. You know, they come up with a program or a rule, and somehow it's applicable to everybody all over the United States. And I think we all know from a common sense perspective that that's not necessarily the case. The other comment I want to make, too, is you donated 10-foot of, of right-of-way on A Street. That speaks to me, there's this concession, the traffic is an issue. Okay? And if traffic's an issue, that goes back to what I said before, you know, A Street is already a mess. It's an absolute mess. And I'm not convinced, frankly, that, that we've mitigated those concerns adequately. So that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor, may I respond to that last comment? Thank you. So actually, the city commissioned what they called an intersection improvement report, which was prepared by WGI Traffic Engineering Company, that the city retained. And that study looked at three alternatives for improvements of the intersection of 10th Avenue North and A Street. The first alternative was an additional northbound left turn lane on A Street. The second alternative was re-timing the signals. And the third alternative was construction of a roundabout. Your traffic consultant determined that, the traffic analysis determined that alternative one should be pursued as an intersection improvement option. So in line with that request from WGI, we agreed to dedicate our portion of the right-of-way along A Street that will be required to accommodate that suggested concession. So that, that's where that came about. That was in conjunction with your independent traffic engineers, and we all agreed that that was the right alternative, and we agreed to do our part there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hardy?
I'm sorry, before Commissioner Hardy speaks, I forgot to say something at the beginning. In your written basis for appeal, there was, there seemed to be an objection to both Commissioner Hardy and Commissioner Robinson participating at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting level. In our discussions, you have basically, you've, you've basically waived your right as, to oppose them being a part of this proceeding. I wanted to just make that clear on the record, so that it's not an issue on appeal.
What I would like to make clear for the record is, is if both Commissioner Robinson and Commissioner Hardy have agreed that they would give us a fair and unbiased hearing and listen to the evidence and review the backup materials without any bias or any preconceived decisions, that we would like them to participate in this proceeding and give us a fair hearing.
That's fair.
Commissioner Robinson has raised his right that he will do that. And I'm sure Mr. Hardy will...
Of course. Okay.
All right, so please go ahead. I'm sorry for the interruption on this.
No worries.
First of all, I'll say thank you to Mr. Dickerson for his thorough presentation, both at this meeting and at the last Planning and Zoning meeting. That study by WGI, I'm very familiar with because staff did it, because I basically asked them to put it in front of the commission to allow them to do that. That was, that was last year, and I'm familiar with those alternatives. I just want to go through some of the things that were established by affected parties in the previous meetings based on the transcripts. Actually, before I do that, just a little question, based off of some questions that Commissioner Maxwell asked. Commissioner Maxwell was focused very much so on the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated at the, at the store. And Commissioner Maxwell believes that it's from this dollar amount that, that the actual store would be able to derive a number of trips. While that might not be the methodology, one of the things that got me thinking about, well, you know, not everyone who spends a dollar in that store is going to take a trip there by car. There are going to be some folks there, such as El Murray School age kids, middle school age kids, high school age kids who are going to walk to that store. And I would like to ask the applicant, do they expect there to be many pedestrians, especially in the morning hours before school and after school patronizing the store?
Yes, Commissioner. We do anticipate that we are part of the community, we are part of the local community, and that we will have customers that will be walking from the surrounding areas. And to your point in the transcript, there was a community resident that spoke, and she said she lived a block and a half from the proposed Dollar General. She said, "I love Dollar General." She said, "I also canvassed a lot of the neighborhood south over the years, and there's a lot of people there who don't have second cars, and they walk a lot." So to your point, there was a resident that actually spoke at the P&amp;Z hearing and stated that she would walk, and she believed others would walk from the neighborhood as well.
Surely. And what I'd like to know is to what extent is the safety of these pedestrians, and there will be many, many pedestrians, and many of the pedestrians who go there will be, you know, will be children, right? So, you know, we talk a lot about cars, to what extent will the safety of these pedestrians who are coming to and from Highland, to and from Lake Worth Middle, to and from Lake Worth High School, to what extent is their safety being considered by the applicant?
Well, I'll tell you, it's been thoroughly considered, because as part of your staff review, those are all concerns that are taken into consideration. Connectivity of sidewalks, crosswalks, ADA access. All of those things are 100% thorough, thoroughly reviewed as part of your DRC process through the city. So I will say that, you know, as staff has recommended, this application fully meets all the code requirements. There's no variances requested, there's no special waivers or conditional uses or permits requested. We do meet all of your code requirements, and, and so we've gone through that thorough review at staff level to make sure access, both traffic, vehicular, pedestrian connectivity, ADA access is all met or exceeded pursuant to your code requirements.
Okay. I want to ask a few questions about the traffic study. So it said that our code only requires a traffic study if a trip generation analysis indicates that there will be 500 or more trips at the site. The trip generation analysis, which is conducted according to ITE methodology, said that there was going to be 312 trips.
Yes, sir.
Still, though, the applicant accepted the burden of doing a traffic study. And the applicant has done three iterations of this traffic study. And I believe it was in between the second and third iteration of the traffic study, there was kind of the acceptance that we need to look at the cumulative impact of developments around it, right? And so I'm looking at the transcript here from the second meeting, and it says, this is from the chairman, you're talking about new residential developments that are being developed or will be developed. We talked about the site up on North Dixie Highway.
Page, sir.
I'm sorry, page 48, second meeting. The two you didn't mention that are on A Street are Lake Cove, which is on the north end of A Street, and I'll interject there, many of the people who will live in that development will drive the same way that people in Vernon Heights drive, which is if you wanted to get on 95, you're going to go south on A Street and approach that intersection. you're going to go south on A Street and approach that intersection and get to 10th Avenue North Interchange. And then the other one was Banyan Court. And you guys accepted, based on the meetings, and Mr. Fisher noted this, and I'm looking at the transcript again, page 49, you guys accepted in the previous meetings that when you guys would do this, you guys would look at at least Golden Roads, the Mid and Banyan Court. So, now I turn to your traffic study. I turn to your traffic study and I'm looking at the sites here. And I see the Mid, I see Golden Roads, the Mid, 230 units, 290 parking spots. Golden Roads, 189 units, at least that many or more parking spots. I don't know if you could supplement my parking spot number with Golden Roads, what you have. Adoptive Family, 14 units, parking enough there. What was not included was Banyan Court, 85 units, more than one parking space per unit. Lake Cove, 57 units. Those homes are designed to accommodate people with two cars. That means people with two cars will choose those homes. And critically, you guys accepted the burden of doing the traffic study and you guys accepted the burden of including at least one of these developments on A Street, but I do not see one of these developments in the traffic study. So, what, can you talk to me about why either Banyan Court or Lake Cove was not included in the traffic study after it was accepted that you guys would include that in the traffic study?
Sure. Well, I'll say that in working with your staff, that was a comment that I believe came up during the first Planning and Zoning Board hearing. And you were trying to figure out with staff which developments would be included in the study. And I believe our traffic consultant and our engineer asked staff which developments that they had reports for and those were the reports that were provided. Now, I will tell you, I think, I want to be careful here because we have done, we have updated the analysis for Banyan Court.
Can't.
But exactly, if that's new evidence, you know, I guess we want to stay away from new evidence, but we have done that updated analysis. I don't believe it was an oversight that, to leave anything out. And also, and I'll have our traffic engineer speak to this, the reports and the analysis do take into consideration cumulative effects, future growth patterns. So, that is taken into consideration. I think there were specific developments that were asked about, but I think he will opine that his analysis did take into consideration future growth patterns, which would take those into consideration and that's why the analysis was still strong and his opinion is still strong that it's a de minimis impact for the Dollar General development. But I'll let him speak to that.
Well, he can speak to it, but what I will say is that growth in the, in the, in the city hasn't necessarily reflected what people have projected growth will be based on land use patterns. For example, if you look at the Mid, 40 units an acre, 290-plus cars there. You look at Banyan Court, which is, you know, exactly at 20 units an acre, more than that number of cars there. Lake Cove, that wasn't even zoned residential, you know, so you're going to have 57-plus cars there, probably two for each household. So, he can, he can speak to that, but as far as future growth goes, but there's present growth happening there right now that, that reflects probably a very different reality, but I would like to hear from Mr. Abdallah.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardy. And to address, I guess, both sides of that question, the, the units or the additional developments that had been approved by the city, we'll call them vested or committed developments, were provided to us through a conversation with staff. And it was a very fast-moving, I think we had gotten some documents and some documents followed later. By the time we were done, you know, it got missed. Banyan Court got missed.
So, it got, it got missed. It was not included in the traffic study?
It was not included in the traffic study submitted.
Okay.
Now, Banyan Court was 85-odd units and, you know, on, on A Street. In my professional opinion, it does not change the results of the analysis, the operation of the intersection.
We're getting dangerously close to new information.
I apologize. Okay, so, so let me leave that out.
Please.
So, so...
It was missed.
So, what we, it was missed and it was not in that analysis, but what was in that analysis is that this project adds less than one second of additional delay to that intersection. And that fact doesn't change because this project doesn't change. Now, in the original study that was submitted, in accordance with the city's methodology, required methodology, we do build in growth based on the historical pattern. We don't say, you know, "This is what you all anticipated." No, we look at the actual growth patterns and we build those into the traffic volumes.
Growth pattern based on, based on?
Based on the counts that are being taken on an annual basis on your road system. So, we look back five years.
So, so if, if in the previous five years, there was absolutely no development along that corridor, which there was absolutely no development along that corridor, the growth patterns would not reflect what we see right, right here today? And therefore, the growth patterns would be inadequate?
I, I'd venture, there was growth. There was growth and it wasn't, the growth is looked at generally in the system, so maybe there wasn't growth shown on A Street, but we did apply that growth rate to A Street.
Okay.
Because there was growth.
Okay. The other thing I'll go to, so we spoke a little bit about the traffic study and about some of the things that it was said would be included in the traffic study that were not included in the traffic study. Can we talk a little bit about the grade differential? And as a matter of fact, in the pictures in staff's presentation, you don't have to show it, but it's pretty apparent you can see the grade differential, whether you're looking from B going, looking west, or you're looking from A going west, that there's a huge grade differential there. And again, I, I just want to refer to testimony of affected parties. And so, I'm going to go to page 93. In the second hearing, in the, in the transcript of that hearing, I'm going to read what Ms. Vicky Harvey has to say, who lives at 1015 North B Street. She says, "When cars come from west over that crest, depending if it's in the morning, you either have the sun in your eyes. If you're going east and in the afternoon, you have the sun in your eyes going west." And because of that crest, you, you, it says, "Condition easily see," I think that's probably a mistype, probably that you cannot easily see. "If you're going to make a turn lane so that they can go into the B Street entrance and the sun is just right, people can't always see the cars coming over that crest." Again, this is an affected party. She's speaking from her firsthand experience as someone who, who lives there and who drives that area frequently. And at the speed they come, you cannot judge it because you're looking this way and looking that way to turn in. So, I recognize that you guys did a trip generation analysis. I recognize that you guys did a traffic study. I'm wondering where in these traffic studies was that effect analyzed? About the grade differential, about the effect that would have to the safety of the people who are making left turns, going east to westbound on B Street, trying to get into the Dollar General that way?
In the traffic study, that was not analyzed, Commissioner. That is a, that is a, a design detail, so that would be part of the, part of the engineering of the site. And at this point, it's, it's, we're still, we're still ahead of that. But that will absolutely be analyzed. The, the movements will have to meet side distance standards that are well-established by the Florida Design Manual. So, if, you know, those are things that we will take into account as we engineer the access.
Was that taken to account in the design of this site here? The plan of which we're supposed to either affirm the denial of or try not to, yeah.
We ask again, Commissioner Hardy, please.
Was, were those design issues that Mr. Abdallah spoke about, right? So, he said that it wasn't a traffic study issue?
Yeah.
That that was a design issue. Where is that analyzed? I guess in the, in the backup documents related to the design of this site?
Well, we're still, forgive me, Commissioner Hardy, we're still going through that design and engineering approval process. The turn lane has been, as stated in Mr. Dickerson's presentation, the turn lane has been designed accordingly to the, the speed limit in the, on the road.
Well, that...
So, but you're talking about the site...
That was about traffic flow and making sure that there was enough stacking distance, 205 feet into the traffic lane, so that the through traffic east to westbound would not be impeded by cars coming out of the turning lane.
Turn lane...
But this is, this is about the safety, not necessarily vehicular flow.
Yeah, that's right. And that particular safety item is still being, we're still, it's going through the permitting for that. That has not been vetted thoroughly yet.
Okay, so it hasn't been analyzed?
No, not completely, not yet, no.
Okay.
It's ongoing. We're still, you know, there's been kind of a stop in a period of time here since, since the...
So, as stated, that turn lane, that westbound left turn lane on 10th Street was in conjunction with your staff and the request of that improvement. So, it has to go through all jurisdictional authority review. And if at that time, it's determined by the experts and the engineers that it is not appropriate or unsafe, then of course, that would not be part of this process or this development. However, we have agreed to do it, we have agreed to submit it, it is going through the review process. And if the jurisdictional authorities, including the city, approve it, we will construct it at our cost, consistent with those approvals.
Okay. And the, the one thing that I want to say, I guess, in the, in the lead-up to Mr. Grill making his motion, which is kind of the subject of this appeal, whether or not there was competent substantial evidence behind the decision that the Planning and Zoning Board made on that day, I believe it was March 6th. Was it March 6th? I don't want to miss...
Yes, March 6th, correct.
In the, in the lead-up to his making his motion, he, he said that, you know, that there, you know, "We haven't heard anything about safety." And there's been lots of talk about vehicular, that's why I asked the question about the pedestrians. There's lots of traffic about vehicular flow, which is not the only issue, although I believe that is an issue. There's lots of questions about the safety and the grade differential, which wasn't addressed or analyzed in the design of the site and the site plan which we have before us. Mr. Grill, which he was in the room, he's, he's back there in the room, mentioned that as he was beginning to make his motion, there's like a 10, 20-foot drop when you come over that bridge, people run fast, there is a real safety issue here. I feel like that part of the traffic issue is being disregarded, that I believe was tied into Mr. Grill's motion to deny the site plan application. And so, I just wanted to, to put that on the, on the, on the record here. So, if this is the question part of our discussion, we're not making any motions yet?
You need to hear from all of you. Don't you want to hear from everyone?
Trying to give everyone a chance.
Okay.
We're limited to 10 minutes each?
Mayor, mayor...
We should be limited to 10 minutes each, too.
We didn't think of that.
I did.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Mayor, if I may respond to that last comment, also in your transcript, I will refer you to page 120 with respect to Mr. Grill's comments. He states and he says, "Dollar General is not exactly the kind of store you're excited to get in your neighborhood." Then a little later, he states, "I want Pam, who's your city attorney, to remind us whether or not there's any validity to the city or the citizens, even if somebody is completely in code, not being okay or not wanting a certain type of business in their neighborhood." And your city attorney clearly says it isn't, meaning that is not a legal or viable determining factor, is whether or not you like the business type. And, and I think he says, "Someone is completely in code," meaning that based on what staff determined, we do meet all of the city's land development regulations, land development code regulations, as well as your comprehensive plan requirements. So, you know, just, just to that point, I understand that there were some comments made at the end in the motion, but I think if you look at the totality of the transcript, I think it's, it's fair to determine that there were other factors that were outside of your requirements for your code, your requirements for your comprehensive plan and the legal requirements for competent substantial evidence in making a decision. And I, and I just think that's one example. There's another example in your, in the transcript where one of the board members discussed that they'd gone out and spent an hour outside of another Dollar General counting cars, but they, you know, clearly said that they're not a professional and, and, you know, unfortunately, I don't think the law would support that that's competent substantial evidence in making a decision.
I, I, I won't make any judgments about whether or not that evidence was competent and substantial, but what I will say is, I find that board members, while they expressed a range of opinions, certainly some of those opinions and some of their statements were based in competent substantial evidence. And so, it, it's not apparent to me that the motivation behind Mr. Grill's motion was anything other than competent substantial evidence that he cited in making the motion about safety and traffic, although he may have said other things, he certainly referred to evidence that I would consider both competent and substantial. So, I'm not, I'm not going to go into that, but I, I would like to hear from my, from my other colleagues.
Me too. Commissioner Robinson?
10 minutes?
Whatever you want.
No, I hope it isn't 10 minutes. I want to thank staff for working with the applicant in a challenging site. And I want to thank the commissioners for taking reasonable consideration of the application. The, and it's clearly a business decision to appeal, two decisions that were not in their favor. Was there any personnel change in the planning and zoning from one vote to the other?
No, Commissioner, there was not.
Okay. How many corporate offices are, does the Dollar General have? How many, do they have any regional offices?
I believe they just have their one corporate office. So, I'm, I'm being told they have real estate managers that are located throughout the country, however...
So, where's the management of this store going to be?
It's through the corporate office. So, yeah, all of their stores are run through their corporate office. The real estate managers mostly are in different regions for site selection of, of new...
So, well, then where's the management for the existing one in Lake Worth?
The manager of the store, Commissioner Robinson, will be the, well, the manager of the store. They have, they have a manager...
You don't, no corp, I'm talking about corporate offices.
The corp, they, all their stores...
Are managed by one.
Their corporate office in Nashville, Tennessee.
I appreciate Commissioner Maxwell's good questions on traffic and I was just surprised he didn't mention shopping carts. There'll be no deli operations in this. It's all strictly retail.
That's correct. No deli operation.
Did you speak to any business development people in this state or the county or even our CRA in terms of your approach?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
That is outside the scope of the record. At no point was the CRA mentioned and so that would be new evidence and I prefer that we stay away from that.
Well, it, it goes to the, the consideration of their approach. And I'm, I'm interested in whether the state or the county or our CRA was, was involved in helping you in any way.
Madam city attorney?
Yeah. I, I think we should stay away from that because if he answers this question in the way that you want him to, I don't know what the answer is.
I just want the, the truth.
I know, but it will lead to other questions and they're way outside the scope. I, I just, ah, no.
All right. Well, then I'm going to go, whose idea?
If I may, Madam Mayor, I will say that I believe your staff would support me in saying that we've been very transparent throughout this entire process. We've gone above and beyond throughout this entire process. beyond throughout this entire process, and there has not been a request from anybody, from staff and beyond, that was not thoroughly vetted, and looked into, taken into consideration.
That's a good lawyer, Randy. Moving right on, whose idea was it to create the turning lane on 10th?
I, I believe, and Kevin, please chime in if you have any thoughts there, but I believe that it was really a collaborative effort, looking at the most efficient access to and from the site, the safest access to and from the site. So, I think it was a collaborative effort between staff and our design professionals.
Would it be fair to say, in desperation to accommodate the, the traffic issue?
With all due respect, Commissioner, I, I don't think desperation is the correct word, because I think we're, we're confident-
Attempting-
That the site works with or without the turn lane.
The existing, the existing median, median between A and D was designed and implemented by professional engineers based on their expertise, knowledge of public safety. Copies of that road design are in the city records. Design was implemented to improve flow of traffic from I-95 east to Dixie Highway. This condition is real, the road and the median exist. To me, this is relevant to the application, and the applicant wants to remove that section of the median in the sole purpose of developing the site. There is reliable evidence that the existing configuration works. Closure of those cross streets at B and C have improved traffic flow and decreased accidents. Records of calls for services can be found in the archives of the former Lake Worth Police Department Sheriff's Office. Elimination of the formerly hazardous cross streets at B and C proves the point that the median should not be removed for the sole convenience of the applicant. I spoke at the-
Sir, I'm sorry, can you refresh my memory? I'm not aware of where you're reading from.
From my reference to city history.
Okay, those were your comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I don't speak well, so I have to-
I'm, I'm sorry, I just-
I may be on to the next-
I wasn't sure if you were reading from something, I just wanted to follow along.
Okay. I apologize.
No, no, no.
But it's-
Mr. Styris, keep the mic. I think you should address the issue of your staff's participation in the turning lane as well. We should have a complete record on that.
Mark Styris, S-T-I-V, as in Victor E.R.S., Deputy Director for Community Sustainability. When we're looking at this site, and we're looking at access to the site, and I want to say this clearly as possible, we're looking at developing a site that will generate traffic. And in, irrespective of what is going there, any new development on that site, access to the site is critical to, to the safe development. Our concern was, if you have a, a volume of cars coming off 95, heading east on 10th Avenue, turning right southbound onto A Street, and then attempting to make a left into the store in an area where the traffic backs up due to light, the queue goes past the entranceway on A. So, our thought was, if we could provide a second access onto B, then it gives the cars the opportunity to go, continue eastbound onto B Street, turn there, and then a right turn has no conflicts, where a left turn has conflict with opposing traffic. So, having two points of access, one of them which would be on B Street, which would allow a right turn into the site, would eliminate excessive conflict on A. The idea of the right in, right out on A Street then, is if you're coming north on A Street, you can turn in, right into the site. If you're coming out, you turn right out, and you head towards the traffic light at 10th and A. Any left turn movement on A, trying to get through a site where the traffic queue backs up past the driveway, is going to be blocked by that queue every light cycle. In the morning, it backs up past this driveway, in the afternoon, it backs up past the driveway. So, allowing a second entrance onto B was helpful. Cars going westbound on 10th, if you still had to go all the way to A and turn in, you were still making a left turn into the site. We thought, again, if we broke the median at B, allowed cars to go down B Street and make a right into the site, it would eliminate the excessive traffic on A Street.
So, so I can, so I can safely say that the inconvenience of waiting several lights, turning left at A, is not as good as the danger of crossing 10th from the east, the westbound lane, across the eastbound lane of 10th.
I am not a certified traffic engineer, I don't want to speak outside my professional level of experience.
I just, I just see it as a horrendous danger.
Our, our concern is, one car heading south on A Street, waiting to turn into the store-
It was collaborative, is what I thought.
Is going to block all traffic until it can get in, which would stop anyone else coming off of 10th to continue south on A Street, until they could get through that queue of cars. And assuming that people in South Florida are kind enough to actually leave a gap to let them in, then they can get in. If, if they are not, then they would have to either go down, do a U-turn, and come back up and come in, or, like we had hoped, come in off B Street.
Gridlock.
But that exists today.
Um, was that seven minutes?
Can I answer your question?
Thank you.
If our traffic engineer may speak to that, in the safety, if you don't mind.
So, we're, we're, there's, there's an assumption here that that crossing is unsafe. What, yeah, and, and this is, this is, I'm not proffering any new information.
I'm listening.
The, the engineering of that access point will have to meet every safety standard that is in the, in the Florida Design Manual. So, there, there's, there's design, there's control, there, there are a lot of things that need to be done to ensure that that access is safe, that we, you know, we would have to do. So, this assumption that this access is unsafe, it's not like we're going to go open the median-
The fact is, there's a grade there, and you don't see the traffic that, that you're proposing until you go over the grade.
Without getting into details, there are ways to address those things, and, and we would do those.
And I would just say, for the record, once again, that, you know, we were working with your staff, and that came up, and they wanted us to look at that, they want us to offer it, they wanted us to design it, and they want us to submit it for authority, or for review by the authorities, and if approved, move forward. If that is something that you choose to not-
I congratulate you both for trying to work together.
Sure, sure, we're happy to, you know, we believe the site works perfectly fine with or without that turning, so if you think it's-
I disagree.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying it works fine with or without it. So, if you think it should not be there, that's something that we can move forward with.
In my mind, there's two bad options.
Yep.
Question for you, Mark. When going through the back of, our rules are, you have to have a side entrance to a commercial building from a main thoroughfare. Can you just refresh me on the, why wouldn't the exits, why, why put the entrances and exits on A and B when they could be on 10th, and nobody would have to?
The current major thoroughfare design guidelines that we have require an applicant to put their main vehicular entrances on the side streets, not on the main thoroughfare. Unless it's not physically possible, then the entrance must be, according to our major thoroughfare design guidelines that are in place now, must be on either A or B. And it is possible to put them on A or B, so therefore, the applicant has followed our regulations. The store must have a pedestrian doorway that faces 10th Avenue, but the pedestrian access, which is required by our code, to be on the side street, which would be A and/or B.
So, you can't restrict no traffic, no entrances on A or B, and, and just on 10th Avenue?
If the site only had frontage on 10th Avenue, their access would only be on 10th. Because they have access and they frontage on A and B together, we force them to come off the major thoroughfare. And the idea is that, that 10th Avenue is designed more for mobility than it is for direct access, whereas A and B is designed more as a local street. You emphasize more access on the local streets. As the traffic volume increases, you increase the mobility by decreasing the number of conflict points, the number of access points on that road. So, our traffic design concept is to push the road, to push the traffic onto the side streets to get in, because when you, when you slow down to turn, you are blocking traffic. We're trying to get the traffic off the main roads as quickly as possible, onto a spot where you can then make your turn at a reasonable rate of, of speed, and not back traffic.
But based on history, and this specific piece of land, we know that having it so close to the residential component, despite its being commercial, that backing up to this, I mean, we know that this, it's a high-traffic area with a lot of residential backing right up to it. So, you, you wouldn't be able to do a variance or anything of that kind that would limit the traffic to 10th Avenue and not on the residential streets? Can I ask this question?
Absolutely.
Okay, sorry, I'm just, I was just wondering why that wasn't even approached.
To, to require the access from 10th Avenue into the site?
Only 10th Avenue.
Meaning, are your, are those thoroughfare guidelines, are they entrenched? Does it say shall? Or can the, in reviewing the site plan, can the commission ask, you know, approve with a condition that you explore moving the entrances from A and B to 10th Street?
The 10th Avenue?
10th Avenue, sorry.
So, people wouldn't be turning down the site, because you can't enter from there. You could only enter from 10th Avenue.
So, if I can just follow the logic, if you are heading westbound on 10th Avenue, and the entrance is on 10th, then we're saying, if you want to get to Dollar General, you have to go to A Street, do a U-turn, come back down A Street and go in. And I don't know that making those U-turns at that intersection is the safest vehicular movement option that is available.
Isn't there a center island, though, between A and B?
A and B is a solid median. We're, we're suggesting that that median be broken at B, so that they can turn onto B, make a left onto B, and go down and enter the site at-
You can't make a left turn lane between-
It's a solid median between A and D Street right now.
Can you make a left turn lane between A and B?
Between-
A and B.
Off, heading westbound on 10th?
Heading westbound. I drive this every day.
You'd be too close to the intersection to have another turn. A turn bay there, then a turn bay for the light would not meet the traffic standards for a double turn bay right there, it's too close together.
I'm just thinking, I'm thinking of other cities and, and that, like, say, Congress Avenue and Boulevard, or when you're going to approach that, before you get to that busy intersection where all that retail is, there's a turn lane right off of there, which is just close to that signal light, and it's a separate turn. I'm, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just throwing things out here.
If we want to pursue the engineering design of the dedicated left turn lane bay, turning right into the site versus turning onto B Street, we could look at that, but understand, at that point, you're only about, Jeremy, what's the, what's the total frontage along 10th Avenue of the site? Is it 250 feet? So, you divide that in half, you're only 75, well, 100 feet from the, the traffic light. The average turn bay for a site like this is over 200 feet, so you wouldn't have enough room to pull all the way off for this site, and then have a proper turn bay queue length to also turn left onto A Street. You'd shorten the turn bay for A Street if you put it in the middle, so that way only two cars could stack up to turn left to go down A, and then two cars could stack to turn in, and, and the current number of people turning left off of 10th down A requires a longer turn bay currently. That make sense at all? Sounded weird to my head.
It does make sense, and, so, I want to just look at the bigger picture here for just a moment. There are two crit, major criteria that we're asked to meet, the mixed-use east corridor or design guidelines for both zoning and the future land use, as well as the major corridor plan, and 10th Avenue is one of those streets that are a major corridor. So, there's specific criteria that has to be met in those, in those plans, and the site plan that you have here before you meets the letter of, of all of that, to the letter, which is why we're appearing before you today with full staff support related to those criteria that they reviewed. Access to 10th Avenue, we actually, you know, staff has been very thorough in their review, and they asked us to look at that. And we showed it, and actually had Mr. Abdallah's office thoroughly review that, and we submitted a letter, our Mr. Abdallah's office submitted a letter addressing that, and advising that that is not what should be done, for numerous reasons, such as traffic safety. Commissioner Robinson, as you mentioned, the line of sight here is well, well, so we're limiting access to 10th is, is for sure the right thing to do, in my opinion, as an engineer.
So, Madam Mayor, if I can quote directly from the design guidelines, it says, "Access from the major thoroughfare," which 10th Avenue is, we define it as a major thoroughfare, 10th, Dixie, 6, Federal, all those roads are clearly classified as major thoroughfares. "Access from the major thoroughfare is only allowed when there is no other access option." So, if we're saying the only frontage you have is on a major thoroughfare, then your access can be there. If there is another road that fronts on your property, it has to be from the side street, it cannot be from the major thoroughfare. So, can we waive that? I, I don't see why we couldn't, sure, but I, I don't know if, if we would be creating the safest option by having the access right on 10th.
I was just thinking of, like I said, I was just thinking of Pointon Beach and that area, down by Congress and Pointon Beach Boulevard, and all those shopping areas with things through them. I'm thinking about Military Trail off of Okeechobee Boulevard, when you go towards Community Drive, and you've got shopping plazas and public centers on the left, and there's a turn lane into Cocoa Palm Plaza and whatever, before you hit Spencer. And I'm just thinking of a million places where what I'm suggesting exists as a left turn lane that wouldn't abut into a neighborhood. You know, I'm, I'm just trying to think outside, I'm trying to, to think outside the box.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask Mark a question for a moment?
Sure.
So, Mark, once again, I know your staff and, and our consultant team have been working together for quite some time on this. I just want to ask you if the site plan as proposed meets all of the city's land development regulations and comprehensive plan regulations with respect to traffic and the traffic design?
Well, hold on.
Hold on one second, yes.
We're not, we're not, we're not taking, that's, we're not asking new questions. We allow, we allow the commission to ask questions that were relevant to the site plan, but, and what I wanted to elicit from Mark was whether or not it was something that was possible, and his answer, finally-
Yes.
Was that it's not possible, because the, the code says it shall be on these other streets if there are other, any, any other entrances. That was the answer, that we didn't have to go into all of the other stuff. The answer was, no, we don't do waivers from our code. Your code is your code. So, we, I think the commission understands that you worked collaboratively with staff, and that we've already gone through that, it's already in the transcript, that staff supported what you're doing, staff said it, it met, it met the requirements, so we need to move on for that, and I don't think you need to elicit any more testimony from-
Yeah, and I, and I made a mistake there, too, you can't be asking staff any questions. I can ask staff questions, you can ask me questions, but you can't ask staff questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to keep my mouth shut for lack of getting myself in trouble.
I just have one more quick question.
Commissioner Robinson?
Was there any other sites, because I don't want to discourage you from investing in Lake Worth, but what, did you consider any other sites in, in Lake Worth?
We looked at all the options in the city, and this, including CRA and some other options, and this is the site that allows us to accommodate the development that's necessary. So, this was the only site that was appropriate for this development.
Business decision.
I'm sorry?
Business decision.
Well, I think it was more than business. It was engineering, it was, you know, our consultant team, there were a lot of different, not just business. There were technical issues with the location and the engineering and everything that made this the appropriate site.
Is the store downtown, just one quick thing, is the store downtown, forgive me, Dollar General, also the one that's down in our downtown?
Just expanded.
And how, what is the size of the site?
Okay, we're, once again, I don't know if that was discussed below.
I know, that's why I said I'm going to be quiet now.
I want to be fair.
I just want to ask, has, has any commissioner who has not yet spoken before I-
Yes.
Has any commissioner who hasn't yet spoken desired to speak, and if so, I'll speak after them.
Go, go ahead, I'm okay.
Okay.
I asked.
Okay, so at this point, I would like to make a motion.
Well, that's, well, that's the, you didn't say that.
No, no, you didn't say that. If you, I thought you wanted to speak again.
Okay.
At this point, there are no motions until everyone has gotten spoken, and he's given you the privilege of speaking again before he speaks.
Well, I'm, oh, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Hardy and Commissioner Robinson, for your thoughtful questions. Couple of things that have come to mind, based on some of the answers that you've given. You talked to, and I, I probably got the terminology wrong, but that the cumulative test for traffic, you know, with these other developments, and I think we've established that there were two developments that were not included in your most recent traffic study.
that were not included in your most recent traffic study. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer, but it just seems to me that, you know, if the county says 500 is the trigger, doesn't common sense weigh in when you say, well, gee, I've got 312, but all the rest of these have X and you hit the 500? So everybody could, so what I'm getting at is everybody could have 499 trips and you don't do anything to the intersection or the road? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I, each, each application, each project is assessed on its own merits and its own impacts on traffic. And it's not just the county. Your code of ordinances also requires a traffic analysis only once you exceed the 500 trips. But I will say that a traffic analysis does take into consideration cumulative effects and other developments in the area, both existing and future. So I don't think that that would mean that no project is ever analyzed properly and no improvements are done.
I'm just speaking as a layperson. I want to tell you that in my mind, common sense tells me that you're gonna get a lot of new trips, particularly on A Street, the Banyon Court project that was not included in your study. How many, do we know how many vehicles can be parked there?
Thirty-seven.
It's like 1.9 per--
It was not considered. It was not considered. So we're not going to speculate on Banyon Court. We're just not doing it.
Then let's move on.
Let's go, guys.
Okay, 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 okay.
But your point is, I think your point has been made.
I want to also ask you about the safety factor. I think Commissioner Hardy touched on it, but I don't think we went far enough with the explanation of just exactly how you determine that this is a safe scenario for all parties concerned. Can you, can you speak to, you said there was, you know, sidewalks and ADA compliance and all that. So other than the infrastructure, what other considerations, if any, do you take into consideration when you say this is a safe arrangement we have here?
Well, we, there are a few mechanisms to ensure safety, public safety. I think the best, one of the most important mechanisms is, of course, the land development code. And there's guidelines in the land development code that have to be met. Once again, sorry to keep saying it, but we meet the letter of the intent with the land development code. We've also gone through review with Palm Beach County, from, I got Palm Beach County statement. We have design guidelines that, that the Florida Department of Transportation has put into place that we meet, as well as, of course, you know, the data that the IT has provided. And then the final, the other items that account for safety are, you're required to have a licensed professional engineer certify that it's safe and submit drawings that show that. And you have a thorough review process with your staff to ensure safety. And there's a lot of layers of staff that we, that we work with from planning perspective, engineering, public works and all the way down the line. So I think that, that city does really well at ensuring safety when projects are approved.
Do these criteria that you use determine that safety has been considered? Sounds like a dumb question, but do you take into consideration the demographics of the neighborhood? In other words, the age of the neighborhood? Or the, what the age of these people are doing? I'm talking about the schoolchildren. Because in my mind, when school gets out, and I got a dollar in my pocket, I want a candy bar and I'm excited about that candy bar. And you know what, I just, you know, I don't want to use the term attractive nuisance, but you all know what I'm talking about here. You're gonna be a draw, an attraction, if you will, to small children in an elementary school that's 800 feet away. And sometimes, elementary school children don't look both ways before they cross. Okay? So my question is, how was that factored in to your safety analysis?
Well, I think that actually factors into the rules that are put in place to determine how the city, the county and all these other agencies review developments. And so, you know, size of sidewalks, a crosswalk location, lights, you know, access, pedestrian accessways, ADA requirements. So I do think that all of that is considered in a comprehensive review of any site plan and ours included.
Well, I would say that from our side of the equation, if this is something that we've not adequately addressed in our codes, maybe it's something we need to explore in the future.
Agreed.
Because we don't, okay. But the other, the other thing you mentioned, transparency. You talked a couple of times about transparency. So I got a couple of real quick questions. Are all your stores corporate stores?
Yes.
No licensees?
No licensees.
No franchises?
That's correct. To the best of my knowledge, there's no franchise model.
Is your company publicly traded?
Yes.
And if it's publicly traded, why can't you disclose sales?
He doesn't want to.
Well, I actually don't have, I don't have that, I don't have that information.
It doesn't affect the town. It doesn't affect the traffic.
Yeah, it's not part of the--
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Very, okay.
But I don't have that information.
Very well, you know, to me, this speaks directly to the traffic study and how the traffic study was built. Okay? And if you truly want to be a good neighbor and you truly want to be an asset to the community, all factors need to be considered. It's not enough to say, well, the traffic engineer says it's 312 trips. Do you have to take in, am I going too far, Madam?
Well, I think the question, maybe the question is, do traffic studies usually take into account the dollar amount that a corporation, the revenue that you bring in?
By, by your code requirements.
Not our code requirements, I'm talking about traffic studies in general.
In general, traffic studies do not depend on revenues of stores. We depend on traffic generated to build our analysis. We don't, we don't depend on revenues.
Well, I will tell you that, somebody who spent most of my adult life in corporate America, I can tell you that sales has a real big impact on where you develop a site.
Well, in reviewing the methodology for the traffic analysis, we followed, you know, your code lays out the requirements. The county's requirements are laid out. And then obviously the industry standards for traffic engineering, all those were met.
And of course, if your store superperforms, then would you admit that you're gonna have more than 312 trips a day?
It's an average, as was stated, but we believe we'll be well below what your code requires for the 500 to even require an additional traffic analysis.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Okay, first of all, I want to thank my colleagues up here because you asked a lot of the same questions I was gonna ask. So thank you. I want to thank staff and I want to thank you and your client for, you know, you made a statement, we've come a long way, we have. You stepped up, you listened to the residents. And some of that is in the backup that has come up at other meetings. So I'd like to hear that for the record. Can you tell me a little bit about your client's literary program and how that works in the community? Because that has come up from residents.
Absolutely. So Dollar General has always been involved in their communities. And we actually provided a letter to your planning and zoning department on January 15, 2019, to kind of discuss a little bit about what we do in the communities, including our specific Dollar General Literacy Foundation, which awards grants each year to nonprofit organizations, schools, libraries to support adult, family, summer and youth literacy programs. So since that program's inception in 1993, the Dollar General Literacy Foundation has awarded more than $160 million in literacy grants, helping more than 10 million people improve their lives. And specifically, in the last five years alone, the Dollar General Literacy Foundation has awarded more than $190,000 in grants to Palm Beach County schools and literacy organizations, you know, positively impacting more than 10,000 local residents. And in your city, in Lake Worth, the Lake Worth West Resident Planning Group, the North Grade Elementary and Hittin Oaks Elementary and Palm Beach School for the Autism, Inc., have each received funding from the Dollar General Literacy Foundation program. And in working with your administration and your staff, we are looking for additional way to contribute directly to the Lake Worth Beach schools. And tonight, I'm willing to commit that we will, within the next week or so, have those additional conversations of what that contribution is that's mutually agreeable to both parties. You know, I'm thinking donation of computers or supplies for schools or, you know, laptops, whatever, whatever we deem is appropriate, which is a direct benefit to your school systems. And it's directly consistent with our general principles within our Dollar General Literacy Foundation.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Hardy is a school teacher, so that might be a conversation you want to have with him because he may best know what our schools are looking for at this time.
Sure.
Couple other issues was a buffer wall and a mature landscape. Those two were on my list, also came up with residents multiple times. So can you address the buffer wall and the mature landscape?
Sure. Well, with respect to the mature landscaping, as stated by staff in their presentation, there was a request for additional canopy trees to be placed, I believe on the southern buffer, was it, Kevin?
Yes.
Yes, and we did agree to do that. Our budget has also increased significantly for mature landscaping to be on the site so that as it's installed, of course, it's larger and make sure it has the correct buffers that are required. So that is in our budget now. With respect to the wall, as discussed earlier, there's the grade difference. So we anticipate that the wall is gonna be between 10 to 12 feet high on our side so that it's, so that on the neighbor's side, it's probably around six feet high, which is what they asked for. But you, because it starts the grading, we have to do that high. That's, of course, an additional cost that's in our budget now. So with, compared to our initial budget, we've probably added about a quarter of a million dollars in our budget for enhanced landscaping, off-site improvements, onsite improvements. There is a six-inch water main loop that's not required by your code, but in working with your city staff, we believe it would be a significant benefit for the site and surrounding areas and we agreed to do that. Like you said, enhanced landscape efforts and elements throughout the site, restoring the existing brick knee wall at the bus stop, at the intersection, at our cost, upgrading our building architecture, which was thoroughly discussed, the rear buffer wall, which we discussed. There's also a 10-foot force, the 10-foot right-of-way dedication that we talked about and the cost associated with that. So, once again, at every turn, I think we've agreed to add and pour into this project to benefit the community and minimize any negative impacts.
And that community is a very walkable community. So, Mark, have we taken into consideration larger landscape canopy trees along the sidewalks in, on 10th or on A or B? Is there room or, because we continuously talk here about canopy trees along sidewalks so people can walk and--
So to answer your question briefly as possible, Madam Mayor, yes. You did consider canopy trees and they are providing canopy trees along there.
Thank you.
Okay. And Vice Mayor, one other thing, if I may. If you recall, I know you all pass the site frequently. There's those transmission lines there. We are undergrounding all of those lines. So as you know, that's been an eyesore and that is as part of our development. Those will be underground and removed.
Okay, continuing on with the--
On our property.
On the property.
Yes, sir.
Continuing on with something that may be an eyesore. Because this is an entrance to our city, there were concerns from the board members and also one of my concerns is displays outside to be sold as, like propane, ice, things like that. If this were to pass, that would be one of my big concerns that, you know, there is no outside storage is what some of the people were calling it.
Sure. Well, what we traditionally do is some minimal outside storage, but we make sure it's screened properly. There's a vestibule that's on the northwest side and we would, if it's your pleasure, request that we can store, but it's behind that and shielded from the visibility of 10th Avenue. You can see, you see on this, on this site. Kevin, do you mind showing on that northwest corner of the building where the pop-out is?
And again, Mark, this would go into our code of ordinance because I know that we do allow three outside objects. I don't know if it falls into storage, but it also piggybacks a little bit with Vice Mayor Pro Tem Maxwell's conversation about boxes and outside storage because I quite often get calls from other stores in the area that store the plastic bins, that store the wrapped boxes, other things that you just don't need in the store. So I want to make sure that, because that's such a high-profile corner, that that would be kept behind some kind of screen.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I think we would be willing to agree that it would be properly maintained, of course, and then it will be screened from visibility from the adjacent major thoroughfare, which is, which is 10th Avenue. I also say that, you know, in terms of corporate policy, it's usually a win-win if you do things like that the right way. You keep a neat store, you store in the right places, both from a safety perspective for your customers coming and going and from an aesthetic perspective, being a good neighbor to your community. So, you know, the principals are here and they hear you loud and clear. And that's something from an operational standpoint that we believe we can absolutely satisfy. And if there's a condition that it be behind our vestibule as shown or screened that way, we would be more than willing to accept that condition.
Mark, because of the elevation, what does flooding look like? Because you now have somewhat green space there that would soak up some of the water once you put structures there. I'm hoping, I'm sure we have taken into consideration any flooding or water running in different directions and what that looks like in the neighborhood.
So any site that is being developed within the city has to accommodate stormwater runoff from their site. They would have to match and meet our code before they can build. Any new impervious area, there would have to be accounted for also.
It's a higher elevation than most of the development that's happened in the city.
That's correct.
It's gonna run downhill wherever down really is. The only other thing I wanted to address that was in the backup that has come up tonight is trucks. We have a big problem with trucks going through neighborhoods, even with signs. You know, it's hard to police. Is there a program within the corporation that can say the truck comes in off of 95, it does not come through the neighborhoods? And is, does any of the corporation that you know of do times? Because we've talked about that, too, like up at our beach. The trucks should come at a certain time. I don't know that we've mandated it, but it's a suggestion as a good neighbor standard that the trucks come in on 95, they drop off, they leave on 95. They don't cut through the neighborhoods because they may be going to another dollar store or somewhere closer that would be more convenient. And then also times of deliveries.
Well, the first thing that typically happens is we look at the city's code of ordinances and make sure that we're consistent with what the city requires in terms of times of delivery. And if the city does not have specific times of delivery, then typically a city will have nuisance times that says you can't do certain things within certain time. So that's the first thing we do, we make sure that we can abide by that. As you all know, with traffic patterns, sometimes it's easier said than done to agree to certain hours if there's an accident or something happens. But the good news is, like I say, our entire team is here this evening, including the owner of the property or the contract purchaser, who would be the owner of the property. And we can make sure that we talk to our facilities folks, our operations folks, and we express the concerns of the city and we set some protocols in place on how we operate to mitigate or minimize any negative impacts from there. We hear you loud and clear there.
Okay, and in closing, I just want to thank you again. I think that you've met the burden. I think you, staff agrees that you fall into the zoning that falls into that category. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple of questions I want to ask you that I don't want to jeopardize these proceedings. It'll be recess for a few minutes so I can ask you these questions. I don't want to say, so the questions I want to ask, I don't know if it's gonna jeopardize the judicial process.
That's true.
Let's take, oh, is that? All right, let's take a five-minute recess to do that. Please, let's not--
Talk amongst yourselves?
Not only talk amongst yourselves, I don't really want you talking to anybody.
We should just stay seated.
Just stay seated, yes.
Okay, if everyone would stay seated while she and I talk?
If Pam and Pam need to talk.
Can I go to the bathroom?